All right, are we ready?
Yes.
All right, let's go. Are we on? Okay, so I will call the work session to order for the Oregon City Commission for Wednesday, July 20th, 2016. Call or roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Mingleberg.
Here.
Mayor Holliday.
Here.
So we have two discussion items on tonight's agenda. I don't know if everyone has seen the Oregon City News today.
No.
But there is an article about what happened at the last Regional Waste Water Treatment Capacity Advisory Committee. So, Tony, do you want to say something about this before?
So at our last staff or City Commission meeting, there was a request to bring this back to talk about the city's involvement in the Regional Waste Water Advisory Committee and what role we should take in that. I think, you know, obviously, being one of the second largest cities in Clackamas County and, you know, a regional leader that we want to be, you know, I think we need to consider those things in the context of the discussion tonight. I can certainly understand the frustrations. This has been going on a long time as it relates to Tri-City. And so I think Mr. Lewis and I are here to help facilitate the discussion, answer any questions that you may have.
So let me give a quick briefing on what has gone on in the last 14 months or so. We started out with, as the Regional Waste Water Advisory Treatment Capacity Advisory Committee, it gets so long and I can't forget it. And in the beginning, we thought, at least the committee members thought, that we were actually in the process to go find a solution for this alleged capacity problem. As we got into it, started working with Gladstone and, you know, asking for information from staff, it became apparent that we were not getting the full picture about what exactly it meant about capacity, where the capacity was, you know, where the capacity had disappeared from, because up until a couple, three years ago, our staff was being told that there was plenty of solids handling capacity at the Tri-City plant. So we started having those discussions every other month or so. And at the same time, Council Johnson from Gladstone discovered this new technology, which we inserted into the process. But it was apparent that almost every turn that the county and the county staff was absolutely opposed to anything other than the path they had set us on to get to in the first place. And in the, so we went up, we looked at the Omni-processor by Janiki. I've talked to you guys about what it is and what it looks like. At the, the meeting before this last meeting we had, we had invited Janiki Industries to come down and give a presentation at the Regional Waste Water Meeting. Unbeknownst to us, county staff did their very best to sabotage Janiki by bringing, you know, sending out emails informing all of these myriad, you know, environmental groups and surgeons without borders or doctors without borders or, you know, some of these people to come and try to discredit Janiki, which they attempted to do. Counselor Johnson and I were actually fairly embarrassed by the way that was handled, because we were led to believe that this was going to be just a chance for Janiki to come in and explain their stuff to the committee. And it wasn't supposed to be a back and forth about whether, you know, this was good or bad, or whether the technology worked or it didn't. And we're talking about a guy like Peter Janiki, who has designed things to build the biggest jet aircraft, you know, that Boeing makes, or pieces for the Joint Strike Fighter, or things like that. It's hard for me to believe that these aren't a bunch of really smart folks who deserve better treatment than to be sandbagged by the county commission and county staff. So at that point, it was obvious to us that they were going to just completely blow by all of the work that we had done and said, "We're going to go with digesters." That's what happened at this last meeting, was they essentially voted to take the Janiki bioenergy system stuff out of the mix of what we had going forward. Counselor Johnson and I, feeling was that with the minimal investment of $10 million, that there was certainly worth the risk, the minimal risk, given the vetting that had been done by those of us who had, you know, looked at this and other companies. I've spoken to folks from Black and Beach and from CH2M and a couple of others, that it was, given the $55 to $60 million that we're talking about spending in ratepayer money to build digesters, versus this technology would actually would save us money, would produce electricity to help run the plant, which would save us money. There were just a lot of different reasons why this was really something that we should take a much harder look at. At that point, it was clear to me that no matter what we do as a city, or me as mayor sitting on this committee, that we're not going to have any effect on what it is the county's going to do. Because as the quote governing body of both Tri-Cities and CCSD-1, at the end of the day, it's the county commission's call. So I don't know about you guys, but I have plenty of meetings to go to. And to waste my time going to something and arguing for the city's position when I know it's a complete waste of time and they're going to listen to a thing we say, it just doesn't make any sense to me anymore. Counsel Perry from West Lynn, you know, said, "Well, you still need to be here for rates." Well, rates are going to be the same thing as the digesters. They're going to do what they're going to do. And so the only thing that we can do is find another way to change the governance structure at Tri-Cities and the Tri-City Service District. So I am working on ways to affect that that we haven't tried already. I think we've spent 18 months trying to affect that change to little or no avail. So that's where I am. You guys tell me I'm wrong.
Well, I will say that we haven't had any effect on the advisory commission since, the advisory committee since it was created. So it's not just the last, you know, couple of years, it's been since 2008. So I agree with the frustration and I agree with the viewpoint that whether we have someone at the meeting or not, it's really not going to have very much of an effect on what they decide.
However.
You know, I think to some degree, you know, we probably, unless we have a plan fairly soon to start dealing with the other question of governance and everything else, we, you know, need to at least have someone sitting in that meeting to know what the heck's going on and keep track of it, which I know we would be able to anyway. But I just, we've had this conversation or concern about the governance issue for some time, that we feel that the capacity issue is really not an issue for Tri-Cities. Gladstone, for the most part, feels the same. So, you know, I think we probably need to have someone show up at those meetings and tell we get a game plan together to figure out what we're going to try to do if it's not, if we're not getting anywhere through this advisory committee. But the frustrating part is, no matter what we do, the county's going to figure out a way to use it against us, which means if we don't send someone to those meetings, that every time they make a decision, they're going to say, "Well, you could have had someone at those meetings." And every time we do go to the meetings, they're going to say, you know, well.
You were at the meeting, so, you know.
Right. And that's what they've been doing for years, and years and years and years. And that's not going to change.
From the 2008 agreement, they said that.
They said.
Oregon City was there, but Oregon City's people.
You might as well be a part of this.
Oregon City's people opposed it.
You might as well be a part of this IGA so that you can have a say in what happens for the next, you know, however many years. And we have had no, we've had say, but it hasn't been heard and it hasn't been, it hasn't had any effect.
Especially if your six-year-old giving you mortgage advice.
I think we need to have someone probably going to the meetings, but I, the faster we can, I'd like to come up with a plan to figure out what we really are going to do if this, if we think, I mean, I was ready to do this years ago. I think we've kicked this so far down the road and the county has been able to drag this on, and that's what they've done with everything.
We're in the process of having a way forward with this, but we're waiting for Mr. Kabeisman and the attorneys from Gladstone to work out some agreement so that we can meet jointly.
Well, I guess my other concern is we have that now, but then in November, we have an election that could change any one of these three cities' viewpoints on this and have new people that maybe not know necessarily the history or the background behind the decisions that we're making right now on this.
Right.
So I think time is crucial.
And Counselor Johnson and I agree with that assessment, and we do have a game plan to go forward, but it's not ready for prime time yet. But I would anticipate within 30 days, it will be, at least to the point where we could have a work session, whether it is in executive session or not, I'm not sure, depends on what that looks like.
Right.
So I have attended a few of those wastewater meetings, and you could kind of tell that, that number one, that the county commissioners are, it's going to be their decision. And all along, I've always been working towards a change of governance there with Mayor Holliday here and stuff, so. And I appreciated Mayor Holliday's involvement in looking at alternatives with Mr. Johnson and, but they came to the meeting the other night and they decided, "We made a decision, we're going to go this way." I appreciated your passion on that. But I think that the ratepayers of Oregon City need to be represented on the meeting, because if our absence is there, it's just not really good PR for us. Regardless, I understand how frustrating it is, but we've got to think about our ratepayers, and we've got to be represented there, so.
I couldn't agree more with Brian and with Tony. I know it's frustrating, and I know that you've put a lot of time and thought and energy into this, and but the city needs to protect its own interests, and we can't do that if we're not at the table, so.
We can't do it if we're at the table.
Well, but if you're not there, then you get done too, so that's a bad position to be in.
Well, you know, it's obvious from the history with the county, at least while I've been mayor, that we're going to get done too, no matter what. So I will take Commissioner Shaw's comments as volunteering to serve on the Regional Waste Water Capacity Treatment Advisory Committee.
I nominate Brian to serve in that capacity.
Well. I appreciate that.
I'll hold my second.
Really? But does it have to be a elected official?
Yes.
I would say Lance or Tony.
No, this is a policy, these are policymakers, we can't have staff doing that.
So the next meeting is on the 25th of August, is that right?
I really think Rocky should finish out his term on that wastewater committee.
I think they meet during the school day.
No.
No, no, 6 o'clock.
Six o'clock night. Nice try, though.
Yeah.
Try to buy your own.
I wouldn't mind, I mean.
I don't really care if he does it, I'm just not going to go there anymore.
Okay. Rocky, if you want to do it, we can just make that decision now, Isaiah. Because you've got history, you've got the most history, 2008.
You might be.
If, if.
If I find the same time.
Yeah, exactly.
If they meet on a time that I can go.
6 o'clock Thursday night.
Is, does that same Thursday, does it ever overlap with Tri-City, with South Fork?
No, because we're on Wednesdays now.
Yeah.
Okay.
There are, we haven't talked about Tri-City, so I'm not sure about that piece either.
I'm going to continue to attend Tri-City for the meeting. I did not, you know, whatever I said walking out the door does not constitute a commitment on my part.
Okay, because they do meet during the day.
Yeah, so I will continue to do the Tri-City Advisory Committee, even though it has the exact same force and effect as, you know, throwing a snowball into a volcano.
So, okay, I assume then Gladstone's still staying?
I would assume, I shouldn't make an assumption, because Gladstone is also meeting tonight.
To have the same conversation.
To have the same conversation. I'm guessing probably that their board is going to have somewhat of the same opinion as you all do, although maybe not, so we'll see. I doubt that it would be Mr. Johnson that would continue to attend for Gladstone.
Right.
Either.
Well, I'm open to it.
Okay, well, then I will, I will make the appointment to Commissioner Smith.
Oh, you, I was so close.
To take my stead at the Regional Waste Water.
We'll be there in the audience while you.
Treatment Advisory Committee.
But I, we might want to appoint an alternative, an alternate, just in case I can't make the meetings.
And, I mean, let's face it, the number of meetings, they sometimes hit a monthly, not always.
Right. No, typically, it's been every other month. We had, we had an interim meeting this time because they were trying to push this.
So, I mean, that's going to mean for Commissioner Smith, what, two meetings?
Well, everybody should have a little bit of fun before they go.
Thanks.
All right, that's a done deal, so we're moving on. So we're at 16-445 Clackamas County Fuel Tax Measure for the November 2016 ballot. Do you have anything, Mr. Manager?
So I think we had discussed the proposed county vehicle tax, or, sorry, gasoline tax proposal. So just a little bit of background, so the elected, some of the electeds from the jurisdictions within Clackamas County met with county representatives to discuss a vehicle registration fee versus a gas tax. There was quite a bit of discussion around that. Portland has recently passed a 10-cent gas tax, so the decision, the consensus seemed to be to look at the gas tax option with a range of 6 to 8 cents. The county did put forward a proposal to bring it forward as a 6-cent gas tax on the November election. With that came a request for the local jurisdictions within Clackamas County to support, show support for the proposed measure, which includes passing a resolution saying that they will support the tax measure, as well as signing onto an IGA, Intergovernmental Agreement with Clackamas County for the dispersal and other commitments being made by September 1st. In that letter that we received, which was not discussed, was the clarification, so the county is going to collect the gas tax. They're going to divide it, 60% to the county for their safety or road condition improvements, 40% would go to the cities. That 40% would be divvied up to each of the cities based on population. One of the requirements is that only those cities that pass the resolution and agree to the IGA by September 1st will be eligible for the dispersal of the city 40% by population funds. For Oregon City, I believe it was about 500, the estimate, the estimate was about $590,000 per year for seven years, and then it would, it would be sunsetted. You know, I think the proposal to require each city to pass that in order to be entitled to those funds was not discussed when we had met before. So the first time we saw that was in the letter that came out last week.
Well, let's be clear, too, that the letter that came out was not from the county chair or the county commission, it was just from the transportation director and the public affairs guy.
And, you know, I think that there's, you know, I hope when we have this discussion, once again, just after our last discussion about our frustration with Clackamas County and some of the reasons or why things are done, I certainly appreciate that I don't understand, and I had a conversation with Ms. Cartmill about the decision-making to put that requirement in there. You know, so hopefully, as we're going through this discussion, it's really two things. You know, the political side of feeling forced into making this decision or to receive funding, but really, the main issue is, you know, do we want to support the tax? If this wasn't on the table, you know, we had, we were having these discussions, folks were probably starting to think about where they stand on this position. You know, there's a couple of ways to look at it. One is requesting our agreement to sign on in order to receive funds, feeling like they're demanding us to do this in order to receive funds. The other side of it is that certain jurisdictions are making tough decisions to support this tax measure. It's a big decision for many jurisdictions who have many competing ballot measures, have existing revenues coming in from taxes. And there's a potential that some of us will, you know, many of these jurisdictions will move forward to support this, and others will either sit on the sideline, not take a position. And, you know, why should they be entitled to something if they're not going to be a part to helping get this done? So there's a, there's two ways to look at this. And so I just wanted to put that out there, as you guys have this discussion. We have provided you the letter that we received, the proposed draft resolution, the intergovernmental agreement, as well as the most current estimates on revenue that we have in your packet. So we'll, Mr. Lewis, once again, Mr. Lewis and I are here to help answer any questions as we go through this tonight.
Commissioner Mingleberg.
So I've given this a lot of thought, and I've reflected on some of the comments that commission members had made about this at the last meeting that we talked about. And so I did a little research. One of the main concerns that was voiced was, would this measure affect other ballot measures that are on the ballot, whether it's the city or the county? So I looked at the history of general elections going back to 2008, and I looked at jurisdictions that were immediately around us, Oregon City, Gladstone, I'm sorry, Oregon City, West Lynn, Gladstone, and Cambie. And so overall, like I said, in 2014, all funding measures passed. In November 2012, three out of four measures passed. And over 2010, I think it was not, three out of four measures passed. And in 2008, which was right at the peak of the recession, right a month after the worst possible economic news hit the papers, the generous voters of our county approved eight out of nine measures. So they are inclined to be generous, they are, they have the ability to discern different measures and can support multiple ones at once. So I'm not sure that, I mean, I can appreciate the concern, but I don't think it's as real as you might be fearing. So I would not weigh that as heavily as some others might. The second piece was, I looked at gas prices, and so you have this chart before you. If you'll notice, between 2010 and 2014, the prices ranged between 325 and 429. In May, let's see, the most current available was July 20th. It was a full dollar higher than it is today. Today, it's 246. And so at the peak, which is fairly recent, you know, it's quite a bit higher, so people can afford to pay higher gas prices now more than ever before. And then finally, the economy is doing really well, so I pulled some economic stats. The unemployment rate in Oregon City is 4%. The second, let's see, unemployment rate can vary across the country, about 4%, we're less than the state. And the headline is, "Employers in Clackamas County had difficulty filling a number of jobs." So that's the big news. I mean, things have really turned around. Job numbers are up, wages are up. In general, things are a lot better than they have been in a long time. And then the last piece I'd offer is the, from the Oregon Employment Department, nearly 24,000 new jobs forecasted for Clackamas County from 2014 to 2024. The outlook is looking really bright for Clackamas County. So if we're going to pass this thing, now is the time. And I would support putting, support the county's efforts in doing so, because Oregon City will benefit to the tune of at least $593,899 a year or more.
Well, thanks so much for your efforts here, Commissioner Mingleberg. That's really comforting. And, and that was my, that was my problem with it, was because we have a competing money issue that's going to be on there, that being our police facility. But I think with looking at this information you've provided, and also knowing that Chief Band and all of us have done a pretty good job of educating everybody about the police facility, that they should still pass that one also. So I've had an issue, you know, when this first came up, it was going to be between the fuel tax or a fee.
Vehicle registration.
Registration fee. And I thought, boy, if you really want to pass something, you may want to use the word "fee" instead of "tax." But they came up with the tax issue. So I guess I'm, I'm okay with this, because we could use maintenance money here for our roads, so unless somebody else had something else here.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, my same concern is about the police measure at the same time. My other concern is, we're basing this off their numbers, and we don't get to see their numbers. I mean, if we're talking about the other issue we just talked about, over a decade, we've never seen numbers to show what capacity was at Tri-Cities or anything else. What makes us think that we're going to see numbers that are accurate on how much money that they're bringing in and whether or not the cities are getting the percent that we're being told? I have a real concern about that.
You saying either, trust the county?
Just one little, to address that a little bit, they have three different numbers. Their numbers, Eco-Northwest, and Oregon Department of Transportation, and all of those kind of align with their estimate. So the number piece, I guess it's more than just the county numbers.
Their numbers and Oregon Department of Transportation, who.
And Eco-Northwest.
Was completely off-base on the last time they made estimates about something?
You know, I don't know. It seems like they should be pretty close, because they're collecting the gas tax now. It's not as if it's a new tax. So I would, I mean, we haven't seen the numbers, but my sense is, the state should be able to provide pretty accurate numbers on what they're collecting now, based on a rate of tax now.
Okay. So I heard from all you guys, I thank you for doing all the research that you did.
Yeah, that's fair.
For me, this is not about, it's not about the money, it's not about us being able to use the money, it's about the difference between cooperation and coercion. And when we were at the meeting, that roundtable that we had at the moot and everybody was talking, you know, the county has a trust deficit, because many of the cities and the folks that were there said, you know, "We need to have something in writing that says that you're going to distribute the 40% of whatever you decide to do, whether it's a vehicle registration fee or gas tax." And so we were all assuming that that was just going to be, you know, codified in whatever document that came out. They didn't mention word one about requiring us to pass a resolution and requiring us to sign an IGA to participate in this. And, you know, this is the continuation of the county's disrespect for cities and for the things that we do.
And this is exactly how we got, how we signed the IGA for the, for Tri-City, exactly.
So if we look at this from a different perspective, if we wanted to pass a gas tax in Oregon City to fund our roads, we would more than likely have a better funding stream than the county. If we go back out and look at the number of gas stations that are outside cities in the county, they can't, they can't make this work without gas stations that are in the cities. So I would, I would have thought that if I'm going to, you know, let's say I'm going to the CIC to ask them for support of the police bond.
You get one neighborhood to sign off, and then you get the rest.
But I, but yeah, but you go there cooperatively. You don't go there and say, "Well, you know, if you guys won't support this, then we're going to disband the CIC and we're going to eliminate all funding for the neighborhood associations." That's what I like in this, too. So I, you know, I am at the point of, you know, until there are some changes in personnel at the county commission level, to be bullied and, you know, forced to sign this at the end of shotgun, I. end of shotgun, I have a real problem with it. And there are several other mayors. I would ask us to have this discussion, not come to a consensus tonight, because we are going to have a meeting of most of the Clackamas County mayors this weekend at the Oregon Mayors Association Conference. I'd like to be able to bring back that information to you guys before we come to some kind of a decision about that. But there is a semi-consensus now amongst at least, well, I'm not sure it's the majority because I haven't actually counted heads yet, but there's a possibility that the cities are going to say, you know, "Thanks, but no thanks."
I was at the C4 meeting this morning, and I know that Happy Valley is going to sign. And John, you might remember some of the others.
Yeah, so, Lake Oswego decided to go with it. All the cities, and in fact, Mayor Dreamer did a wonderful job of acknowledging the fact that the cities were feeling pretty, you know, frustrated with the communication and the fact that they didn't really even need to go there. And she mentioned the mayor's meeting, but she also indicated that they were, you know, they were going to support it. I know from Lake Oswego supported it, Milwaukee's supporting it, West Lynn's supporting it. They're all having meetings right about the same time. In fact, some of them are having meetings tonight, but that was where the thought was that they were going to be recommending support of that. And some of it, I've heard from electeds, others I've heard from public works directors that I was able to reach on the phone. So, I have a feeling, everybody feels similarly about being bullied, but they're also recognizing the need. All the communities have been talking for years about lack of transportation funding, and they see this money could be, make a difference.
I think that the conversation, I mean, the cities aren't supporting it until they sign that paper. So, what the county is anticipating is all having that dialogue and saying, oh, the other cities are supporting it, so well, you should support it, which is, you know, it's part of this leverage to try to get all this, one city on board.
Pitting the cities against each other.
And I think it's very intentional, and it's exactly what they did with Tri-Cities. And I think, you know, if the mayors have a conversation until the city, one city signs off, you know, the city's doing it on their own, maybe it's better.
Okay. Does there anybody else have any further to add to this particular conversation?
I guess the other point I'd make is that the county is doing the heavy lifting on this one. I mean, to go out to November vote, I mean, yes, the cities will pass a resolution and will probably have a list of projects or a direction where we could spend the money, but they're taking the risk and they're doing the work on getting the word out and getting this passed. So, in essence, if we sign the IGA, it's a gift to us. It's a gift to our citizens that will help make our road infrastructure better and stronger, and it'll help move things forward faster than they would otherwise.
And for me, you guys just understand, I'm not as tainted with the county only because I've only been in this little spectrum for about a year and a half, two years, where I think all of you have been involved with the county some way or other and have a little more understanding of, or disunderstanding of them. So, that's why I'm a little, little more in the feelings that I have about pro-ballotry.
I thought today, at the C4 meeting, the C4 Metro meeting, there was a fair amount of discussion about how they got there. I mean, they weren't defending the letter. It was a letter that was written by staff, so Commissioner Tudy Smith was there and Savas was there. I think they were, first of all, acknowledging that the cities asked for a gas tax versus a vehicle registration fee because we really didn't want them to put on the ballot the vehicle registration fee. So, at that meeting earlier in, what was that, May or June, you know, they acknowledged that they didn't want to go with an eight-cent tax like was recommended, and they chose a six-cent tax because, again, they felt like that was the commitment, that was the dollar threshold that they'd committed to in their advisory vote. And, yeah, they are, you know, feeling like they're taking on the lion's share of selling this, although they want, they want us to be on board and, you know, so that it would be successful. I mean, how many years has it been that they haven't taken action? So, that's a first indication of them, you know, taking some action. And so, you know, that, oh, the other piece was confirmation of the 40%, right, versus no percentage. And they felt like they were making a strong commitment there to 40%. They were, they're simply asking for, and again, I mean, I've read this letter a few times. It is pointed, especially from kind of our perspective, but if an outsider read this letter, it probably wouldn't seem so kind of, you know, lacking statesmanship, I guess, you know? I mean, it, so, with that, I'm done.
Okay. Well, while I understand Commissioner Mengeleberg's point of view, I don't recall ever getting giffed at the end of shotgun, which is what this somewhat feels like to me. As you guys know, I try to be as open and as cooperative and as transparent as we can possibly be. And we have discussions, everybody gets an opportunity to air their viewpoint, and we try to move ahead together. And this could have been accomplished in the exact same way without this coercive action by the county commission. It was fairly clear to me, and certainly we would have, at least I would have said, great, you're going to pass a gas tax? That's okay. I don't think that we necessarily want to pass a resolution in support of that, but individually, as the mayor and commissioners, we could go out and support that so that we limited the damage that might be caused to the police bond. And there are other jurisdictions that have similar issues going on, that they feel like they're being forced to subjugate their city's issue to the county. Let's not forget that Oregon City is the oldest incorporated city west of the Rocky Mountains. We've been around longer than anybody else. And I don't want the county commissioners to be making decisions that our ratepayers are going to have to subjugate themselves to. I don't know. I'm going to talk to my fellow mayors this weekend, and maybe I'll have a change of perspective when I come back. But I think unless there is some other comment, I think we're done.
Just clarify real quickly.
Yes.
So, I guess you've got the meeting this weekend for your conference.
Yeah.
I would propose that we prepare and put this on the agenda for an update from the conference as well as a discussion. Just, and then if we have to, we could continue to the next meeting in August.
We have plenty of time. We have till September.
Well, we have two, we have two meetings before September 1st.
Time flies when you're having fun. Okay, that's fine with me. Okay.
No, it wasn't an officer had the phone, and they interrupted the swearing-in.
Just clarifying.
Okay. So, let's see, I got to change my agenda. There it is. So, I will call the meeting of the regular city commission of Oregon City to order for Wednesday, July 20th. It is 7:12. Call the roll, please. Oh, no, we're going to just fly, oh, no, roll call, there we go.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Here. So, if you stand and join me in flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I would say if this had not happened tonight, as far as the swearing-in of new officers, one of my two Super Bowls this year is going on tonight, and I'm not able to watch the Republican National Convention because I'm here. I will be watching the Democratic National Convention as well. So, before we get started, in the light of what has happened in our country in the last month or so, and I know that our officers have been receiving all sorts of good stuff at the, at the cop shop over the last couple of weeks, that it is amazing to me that we still have folks that are willing to stand up and take this oath of office and protect our citizens. Some of the outpouring of hatred and vitriol towards our police officers across the country is dismaying to me at best and frightening at worst. We have arguably one of the best police departments in the state. Our guys are well-trained, they're well-led, and they do a great job. I've done ride-alongs, I've been personally involved, certainly with my kid. And they have always been respectful, have dealt with the public in the best way that they possibly can. And I think, what was the movie? I forget the movie, but the guy says, you know, you have to be nice until it's time to not be nice anymore. And I think our guys, our guys and gals, show that on a daily basis, that they treat everyone with respect right up until the time that it's obvious that they're not getting that same respect back. So, I want to say for me, thanks to all of our police officers, both sworn and unworn, and the folks that work in the cop shop, and the bailiffs in the court, and all the folks who work up there. It's a dangerous thing to do. Hopefully, it's less dangerous in Oregon City, but as we know, in the last couple of years, it's struck home here as well. So, I just want to give a round of applause to all of our police officers. So, with that, are we going to do this one at a time? No? Jim, you had something?
Yeah, I just want to introduce.
Chief Band, excuse me.
I just want to introduce the people who you're going to be swearing in tonight, Mayor. So, Nick Terrish, do you want to come step forward first? So, first I want to introduce Nick Terrish, who is a brand-new officer with us, who just got out of the police academy. Nick graduated high school from Brookings Harbor in 2008. He worked at PG prior to being hired here. You were a lineman apprentice, is that correct? So, hard, hard work.
Local 125.
Graduated the DPSST Academy, it was July 7th. Married to his wife Taylor, who could not be here, and they've been married for almost a year. Nick enjoys motocross, hunting, hiking, and mountain biking. Sergeant Dave Edwards, if you can come forward. Dave, so Dave has been with us since 2003. Dave is getting promoted to the rank of sergeant, who, our sergeants essentially, after 5 o'clock, sergeant's the chief of police. They make every important decision that really gets made in seconds, sometimes less than seconds. So, who we pick as sergeants is, it'd take way too much time to explain how important the role is, but I think it's the most important role in our police department. We have a tremendous amount of faith in Dave. He's just a good guy.
NCOs run every uniformed service. I'm just telling you that right now.
Dave started our department as a reserve police officer in 2003, was hired full-time in January 2005. He was our school resource officer from 2009 to 2012, an extremely difficult job. Dave was promoted to sergeant July 9th. He's married to his wife Holly. They've been married 13 years, and they have two kids, Emma, who's six, and Ethan, who's four. Dave's a hunter, a fisher, and enjoys spending time with his family. And then Captain Sean Davis, if you can come forward.
I didn't really write much down. First, Sean's an Oregon City, born and raised Oregon City High School. He's an Oregon City guy. He was hired in 1998 with Oregon City PD, been an officer, K-9 officer, been a detective, he was on the narcotics team. The best compliment I can give Sean is if you said to me, look, you need to pick three people or four people to go do anything, I don't care if it was climb a mountain, fight a bunch of people, or I don't care what it was, at work or away from work, Sean is one of the first names of people that I would pick. He is just a good, solid person whose heart just bleeds for Oregon City. I'm super proud that he's going to be on our management team, and I'm just really, really excited about hiring new people like Nick and then getting such strong supervisors that I don't have to worry about whether or not we made the right decision. They're just hands-down good people. So, with that, Mayor, if you want to swear him in?
I will, but I have one more thing to say, and that is, is that we wouldn't have this group of guys, we wouldn't have the group of both men and women officers back there outside patrolling right now if it wasn't for the leadership of Chief Band, and I think he deserves a hand as well. So, second only to reading to fifth graders, this is my favorite thing to do as mayor.
Test one.
There we go. Okay. So, we're going to do this individually, or you say all at once? Okay. So, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, David Edwards.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the law.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the law.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
That I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the department's rules and regulations.
And the department's rules and regulations.
While faithfully performing my duties as.
While faithfully performing my duties as police sergeant for Oregon City, Oregon.
Congratulations. So, I'll give you folks a minute if you don't want to stay, if you're just here for that.
You know, Mayor, Mayor Holliday, Chief Band, while they're walking out to acknowledge Rocky Smith Senior.
Oh, yeah, hold on a second.
He won't come back in here now.
Officer Smith, could you come back in here a second, please?
I doubt he will.
Yeah, he will.
I doubt it.
But when you were talking about when it's time to no longer be nice, he was a great mentor.
Rocky Senior, could you come in here for a second? So, Chief Band had something to say, and then I do.
What I was saying, Rock, was we had to acknowledge that the mayor had said, was talking about, you be nice till it's time to no longer be nice. And I said, in terms of mentors, for when it was no longer time to be nice, there was really no second.
So, now we're moving on to the 3B, 16274, Park City Recreation Advisory Committee Annual Report. And this is coming from, oh, Joyce Gifford and, sorry.
Sean Dashler.
Sean Dashler, there we go.
Sean Dashler. Should get Mike Mitchell up here, too.
Oh, he will.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for having us. Joyce and I have been in our new positions for only about a month, but we'll do our best to give you a complete update. Our goal tonight is to update you on things Prac has been working on in the past year, and we want to highlight our biannual goals, future projects, and the challenges to the park system. We've had 10 meetings since the last time we came before you, and here are some highlights. I suspect you'll recognize several of them. Late last year, Prac hosted several public meetings last fall regarding the new library and how its shape and size might impact the Carnegie Park. Following those meetings, Prac recommended the two-story option and much of what you see today regarding the exterior playground elements. We have been active participants in helping guide and implement the successful pickleball courts at Hillendale Park. Your favorite, right? This has been 100% citizen-led initiative, and they're determined to put their money behind their wish list. They were recently awarded a metro enhancement grant to further improve this area. Girl Scout Troop 45064 has also been engaged with Prac on their desire to improve D.C. Ladderette Park. Their energy is directed at the planning efforts for the future of Ladderette Park, and they were also awarded a metro enhancement grant for their efforts. Prac has also been active supporter of regional projects such as the Riverwalk and Newell Creek Canyon. More recently, we've been working on a non-smoking policy in city parks, and I believe you'll see those efforts very soon if you haven't already. Another highlight this year is the completion of the Irma Tinger House. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Joyce Gifford. She's going to discuss the 2015-16 goals. And following Joyce, we'd like And following Joyce, we'd like to introduce you to fellow Prac member and president of the Oregon City Parks Foundation, Mike Mitchell. He will share a little bit about the foundation with you.
Thank you, Sean. Okay. So, I'm going to begin with my favorite, which is the dog parks. So, we instituted an off-leash area in three of the neighborhood parks, and on July 3rd, my dog and I went and visited every three of them to see what they were like. So, Prac will be taking a look at the neighborhoods, go to the Neighborhood Association meetings, and talk to the neighbors, and see how those parks are working out for them, and see where we're going to continue on with these dogs. So, it's right now on a trial basis.
Which three parks?
And those are Wesley Lynn Park, and-
Park Place.
Park Place, which is my dog's favorite, and then the little one, which is-
Barkley.
Barkley, yeah, Barkley Park. Which brings me to Barkley Hills Park, which is a completely different way of spelling Barkley, but we have completed the playground there, and they're going to be having a picnic there soon, to do a ribbon-cutting at that park. Next, so talking about Wesley Lynn and the dog park, we need to identify some priorities and think about getting the Wesley Lynn Master Plan for Phase 2 started, because the Master Plan was done for the first part of the park, and then additional parklands were added many years ago, but a master plan was never completed. So, then, Prac will be interested in completing those plans, and identifying some timelines, and again, seeing how the dog park is working in there. So, right now, that is an uncompleted project that needs to be finished. There is an RV Park Master Plan that was approved, so Prac will be looking on how we're going to implement the RV Park, and that might also include some discussion regarding placement of a boat ramp. So, continuing that further discussion. The funding and development of the Glen Oak and Filbert Run Parks, both those master plans were approved. Unfortunately, we didn't get one of the state grants we're hoping for to complete or work on Glen Oak Park, but, so both of those parks have some SDC monies that are dedicated to them. And so, we might be able to do some building of those parks, but until we get park staff that can take care of those parks, we need to be careful about how much we build. And so, that's a big discussion that we need to continue to have. Oregon City has a lot of parks, and there are some trails that go between them. And Metro just recently awarded a grant of $25,000 to study and design some connectivity issues between these parks. And so, we're looking forward to working with Metro on that, and I know that there's a lot of Metro Park property that we need to be connecting to, along with our city parks. And I have this whole list here. So, there are 47 park-owned properties in Oregon City, and of course, that includes the senior center and the pool, so we take anywhere from toddlers learning to swim, to helping seniors trim their toenails. And then, of course, the cemetery, which is also part of the Parks Department. So, between all of those properties, there is 257 acres of parkland, and 56 acres of cemetery land, and we are doing all of that with 12 and 1/2 full-time positions. And that's actually only during the summer, it's 8 and 1/2 most of the year. Nationally, we should be having one full-time staff member for every 7 to 10 acres of parkland, and Oregon City has one for every 16. So, we are way understaffed. So, when we consider building our parks, we also need to consider how we're going to continue to maintain them after they're built. So, that's going to be one of the big issues of the discussion for the next budget that's going to be coming up, that you'll be working on for next year, some of you, some of you won't be on the commission anymore. Just one of you. But, talking about funding, I'd like to introduce Mr. Mike Mitchell, who is going to talk about the Oregon City Parks Foundation.
Thanks, Joyce.
Good evening, I'm Mike Mitchell, and I'm honored to serve as the president of the Oregon City Parks Foundation. And we're doing this tonight because it's a natural tie-in with Prac, but I should make it clear that the Parks Foundation is a separate entity. We do have some overlap of board members between Prac members and our board, and in our bylaws, the city community services director is an ex-officio member of the board, and obviously, we'll be working closely with the city, but we are an independent organization. Our first meeting was in May of last year, and it's been a much slower than we would have hoped, and much more painful process, to jump through all the necessary hoops to become a tax-deductible foundation. But we're happy to say that we do have the designation from the IRS as a tax-deductible 501(c)(3) foundation. We're also listed with the state of Oregon as a charitable corporation, so we're fully ready to take tax-deductible donations. And as I said, that took a lot longer, and was a little more painful than we had hoped, but it's all done. We have moved into trying to raise public awareness about the foundation. We've done several, we've had our booth at the farmer's market a couple of times, we'll be doing, continuing to do that about once a month or so. We had a booth at the concert last Thursday night. We will have a booth at the National Night Out on August 3rd?
2nd.
2nd? Close. The other thing that we did about a month ago, we had kind of a combination celebration and open house, celebrating our tax-deductible status at a local watering hole, and we invited close to 100 individuals who are members or leaders of other groups in the city with at least some connection to parks. We think one of the things, one of our main goals, is to try to partner with other organizations, you know, the old Venn diagram thing. There's a lot of organizations in this city that overlap with at least some interest in parks, and open space, and trails. We hope to coordinate that. So, we invited close to 100 of those people, and we had about 40 people there. Commissioner Mengeleberg was there, our city manager, Tony Conkle, was there, Rochelle Parsh was there, representing the Parks and Recreation Department, we had about 40 people there. It was a great evening, and I think it did a lot to help get the word out about the foundation. Our Facebook page is up and running, our website is up, it's oregoncityparksfoundation.org. It's still under development. Roger Fowler-Tice, who is putting that together, he's doing a great job with it, but that, again, is another painful process, trying to build a website, but that is coming together as well. Project-wise, we were, because of the length of time that it took to get the tax-deductible status, we kind of missed the grant funding cycle this year. We did apply for one grant, and got a very positive response, and were told, you know, "Please reapply next year." We tried to sneak it in, even though we were after their deadline, and that didn't work. But, it was good practice, and now they know who we are. Sean mentioned the pickleball group, they are building, they got grant funding from Metro for a practice wall, rebuilding the practice wall at Hillendale Park, and the foundation will be providing some volunteer hours with that. We also will be providing some volunteer hours with the Girl Scout Troop, and what they're trying to do in Lattarette Park. And then, we'll be working on fundraising. Our goal is small victories at this point. We want to get involved in some small projects, make some things happen, some small projects that don't take a lot of money, and to make some things happen, not only to improve our parks, but to get the word, continue to get the word out about the foundation. So, we thank you for your support, and I guess the bottom line is, we've built the foundation for the foundation, and now we've got to get some money to help build the house. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hang on one second. Hey, Mr. Parno? Can you come up to a mic, please? Doesn't matter where. So, I know that there is, for political contributions, there is like a $50 per person, or $100 per couple, that is a direct credit back during, you know, tax season. Does, do folks like this, is there a mechanism for that, same thing?
You mean to contribute to the OC Parks Foundation?
Right.
Yeah, so I'm not a tax accountant, your honor, but I am a CPA by trade, and did do some taxes. I believe you're a 501(c)(3). Yeah, so a contribution can be made to that organization as tax-deductibles, correct?
Okay. So, just to put it out there for the folks out in TV land, that, you know, you can get the state of Oregon to pay 50 bucks for the Oregon City Parks Foundation, because it's a direct tax credit off of, a direct credit off of your tax bill. So, if you haven't used it for something else, consider using it for the Oregon City Parks Foundation.
Thank you for the commercial. One other thing I should have mentioned, we have turned in the paperwork. Fred Meyer offers a program where they will contribute a certain amount for your purchases, and you designate a charity. We have submitted for that, that was done about a month ago. We understand it's about a three-month process to get approved, but that's in the works. As well as another one that we're just starting to look into, where again, you just, you can specify a charity, doesn't cost you anything, but they kick in a small amount, and that's an online company, it's not Amazon, unfortunately, but one of the smaller web companies does that also. So, we'll be doing that.
Did you have something that chastised me about, Mr. Kreisman?
And I'm not a tax attorney, so, you know, you take it as well, but I don't believe there's a tax credit, like the $50 political contribution. I think it's like any other charitable contribution, that it is a deduction that you can take.
Thank you for the correction, sir.
But it does have tax benefits.
Okay.
We'll see you at the movies at the park, we'll see you at the concerts in the park, lots of things going on this summer in Oregon City.
Thank you.
Thank you for your effort, sir.
Thanks for your service, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments?
Do you want to make the announcement of the mayoral appointment?
Oh, I missed it, sorry. I got ahead of myself here. So, we have 16-444, "I am appointing Nancy Broschott to the Natural Resources Committee to fill the current at-large vacancy, appointing term of July 20, 2016, and December 31, 2017." Now, do we have any citizen comments?
We have one.
Because I don't see them online.
Sam Dreebo.
All right. Sam?
Thanks so much. Thank you all for having me. I watched the last city commissioner meeting last week, and was privy to, or two weeks ago, was privy to discussion that sort of happened off the cuff. I know that, I'm here on behalf of the Whitewater Park proposal, and we love clean rivers, I'm on the tourism board for Clackamas County. We've been working on this project for several years, and we've sort of elevated it to the point where, it was elevated to the point where it was heard before the public partners. And I have a little prepared statement, I just want to read. "So rare are the opportunities for a city to economically transform itself to create an anchor destination for locals and tourists alike, a catalyst for investment and growth. Oregon City has such an opportunity before it now, yet if we're not careful, we could let it slip away. Let's back up. Columbus, Georgia had this opportunity before them, so did Charlotte, North Carolina, and South Bend, Indiana, and they all acted. In South Bend's case, their investment in a Whitewater Park attracted 20,000 paddlers, igniting a $50 million development boom in a former industrial area. When we look at the potential of Whitewater Park in Oregon City, the numbers are even higher. Yes, a Whitewater Park, not to be confused with Splash Mountain, a Whitewater Park mimics natural rapids for all variety of serious water sports, where they've been built, they've attracted amateurs and pros alike, as well as national competitions, even Olympic trials. Why Oregon City and why now? Our city is busy in the planning stages of potential new Willamette Falls Legacy Project, a Blue Heron site. A Whitewater Park would complement a River Walk next to the falls, built into natural surroundings, and we're not alone in our enthusiasm. The Outdoor Industry Association, a national outdoor trade group, recently sent a letter of support noting that Oregon's outdoor recreation economy is already strong. $12.8 billion in consumer spending, 141,000 direct Oregon jobs, and 955 million in state and local tax revenue, and only stands to grow through smart investment. We believe incorporating a Whitewater Park into Willamette Falls Legacy Project poses one such opportunity, and I'm here formally endorsing the concept. Likewise, the Oregon Sports Authority views Willamette Falls Whitewater Park proposals one that could elevate Oregon's profile with the Olympic discipline of whitewater canoe slalom, creating a hub for this industry in Clackamas County, could not only drive the development of this industry, but could also attract visitors for world-class events. Finally, Eco Northwest created an economic study, a Whitewater Park at Willamette Falls could, was projected to bring up to 130, 180,000 annual visitors, 20 million annual spending, and support 122 new jobs in the area. The opportunity couldn't be clearer. Yet to move forward, we have a Whitewater Park to even be considered, Oregon City Commissioners must approve a renewed design process. This move wouldn't simply lock us in, simply allows for the possibility of such an investment for our community, for economic growth, and for potentially regional-changing projects. We hope that the commission will step up, like all other cities across the country, grasp the opportunity before us. Since the public partners meeting, where it sort of came out that option 3 was the preferred version, we got a support letter from the Oregon City Business Alliance, where we did have a presentation, and they are strongly urging the middle path, to keep the option alive, and design the River Walk in such a way that does not preclude the ability for a whitewater channel to be added in the future, while we love clean rivers conducts additional feasibility studies, and develops a finance plan.
Thanks, Sam.
We also received a support letter from Travel Oregon, and today, we received a letter from George Heideggerken, from Falls Legacy LLC, and I'll leave these here, but it's basically saying the Whitewater Park will fit within the criteria of the project, and now is the time to address it. So, I'm just asking that, and I know my time is up, that this conversation be had in a more thorough way, so that we can really vet the opportunity, and consider it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
I assume that Father Time's on the list now, too? Or is this a different one?
For a different item.
Okay. So, we'll go to the adoption of the agenda. Everybody okay?
Good.
All right. Then, we're on to public hearings. And this is PC 16-076, request to continue annexation file, and 16-0001, for the 046, .46 acre property located at 19358 South Columbine Court, to August 17th. Is there anything that, sorry, force of habit. Ms. Turway.
Thank you very much. So, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this annexation to the City Commission on July 11th. However, they had strong concerns, because that application couldn't be approved with the zone change to a city zoning designation, it was just an annexation. Since that meeting, the applicant has decided to submit the additional information that they need to submit in order to get the zone changed. So, we're requesting it continues to August 17th, but now, at this August 17th hearing, you'll be hearing the zone change, as well as the annexation request for this half-acre.
Questions?
Do we know what they're requesting the zone change to?
It's the default zone, so they're, within our conference of plan designation, they're identified as low-density residential, and in our code, it tells us that the default zone upon annexation is R10, which is single-family residential, with the 10,000 square-foot minimum.
Move to approve PC 16-076, request to continue annexation file, AM-16-0001.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Next up, PC 16-075, first reading of ordinance number 16-1007, adopting amendments to Oregon City Municipal Code, Chapter 17.62, site plan and design review, and Chapter 17.50, administration and procedures. Ms. Turway? Yes, no?
Thank you very much. So, we have, over the years, heard from businesses who have expressed concern that small alterations to their buildings are sometimes slow and expensive to go through our review process, and we've listened. And in response, staff has worked with the Community Development Department Stakeholders Group, Main Street, Oregon City Business Alliance in the chamber, to come up with a new streamlined process that does not change our code or our standards in any particular way, all it does is streamline the process, so it's quicker and a little bit cheaper. So, we have Kelly Reed with our Planning Division to tell you a little bit more.
Would you like to pull up this slides, or?
I think we saw them last time, didn't we?
It's up to you guys, if you want me to pull them up again, I can do that.
Were you here last time?
I wasn't.
And I wasn't here. Let's just flash through them real quick, if you don't mind.
Sure, absolutely.
Well, that's right, it was just you and me, Rocky, we were here. I forgot that meeting, yeah.
Well, you had two and a half, because she had hirs, but no highs. Well, you had two and a half because she had hirs but no highs.
We've been working on this project for several months now, and it's actually been an idea for quite some time. We've really wanted to accomplish this, to streamline this process. The amendments create a type-one review process for site plan projects that are simple and small and don't involve any discretion. So the code stand, the standards that apply to these kind of projects are really black and white. There's no gray area, and so we can easily see if it meets the code or it doesn't meet the code. And so we'd like to be able to review those more quickly in a day to a week rather than several weeks. So this process would not only improve the timeframe for development projects, it would also reduce the cost. The application fee would be lower because our time spent reviewing the application would be shorter. Some of the code criteria, for example, just this, this black and white criteria that we're talking about, it really mostly numerical-based standards. For example, facade transparency, 60% of your front facade has to be windows or doors. You know, we can easily check the box. There's no, there's really no arguing with, with that. Another example is parking space size requirements. You know, we have the minimum numbers, and it meets it or it doesn't. These are a few examples of the types of projects that this process would apply to. It's a lot, a lot of what we see is storefront improvements. A lot of them are on Main Street, but really they are throughout the city, and these types of projects, we'd be able to issue permit or issue land use approvals within a day to a week if this process is adopted. Just a few examples along Main Street here of new windows and doors and facade improvements. There's one on Beaver Creek as well that happened in the last few years, another one on Main Street, and then that's Eastham School. They did some fencing and landscaping that actually had to go through this process, and we'd really love to be able to streamline that for, for really nice improvements and enhancements like this. So we have an application form that would be filled out instead of, instead of an applicant having to produce a whole written land use package, they can just fill out a simple application form and give us their set of plans. And then I, if we have any questions, I have the long list of types of projects that this could apply to, but I don't anticipate that we'll need to talk about all of those. But if you have any questions, feel free.
So what percentage, assuming we approve this process, would be able to be issued over the counter?
We, we haven't tracked them in a way that would, where we could give you a percentage, but I would say, what do you think, Laura, at least 10, 15 to 20 a year?
It's thereabouts. One thing that we've heard over the years is for someone who wants to do minor improvements, sometimes the cost and the time length of the process has deterred them in general. So we would expect to see some things come through that maybe never came through before as well.
And another question, would, since this is nondiscretionary and quick, would it be possible for an applicant to file everything online and not even have to come to your office?
We would love to be able to do that, and we are moving towards electronic applications. But that actually doesn't have to be codified. So the good thing is that we can, you know, move forward with these code amendments and then work on the, the online application process, you know, on a timeframe. It doesn't have to involve a code amendment.
So who owns IT? Which department have, is that you?
I'm thinking it, it was under Community Development. I think we're gonna, we're gonna move it around a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
How long is that application form for the, I think I heard something like 20 pages. I couldn't be right.
So, yeah, what we're gonna do is, we'll have a basic application form that's two to three pages, and then depending on the type of project it is, we'll have addendum. So if it's, if it involves outdoor lighting, for example, well, they'll have to fill out the additional page for outdoor lighting, but it won't be part of the main application.
Good. All right. Business friendly, that's us.
So as a typical application going through the current process versus this new projects, how much less would it be for someone?
The application fee?
Mm-hmm.
We are bringing the proposed fees for adoption with the second reading of this ordinance. Right now, the application fee for a minor site plan is $823, I believe, and that would go down to, we actually are thinking of, we're gonna bring probably two categories of projects here, some that would, that require a lot less review, and then some that are gonna require several hours of our time still. We'll still be able to do it quickly, but it could take a few hours. So I think what we'll see is something more around 200 or so dollars instead of 800.
Much better.
Questions? No?
Could you just talk a little bit about where this is applicable and where it's not in the city?
Sure. This would be, this applies citywide. However, the Planning Commission, when they recommended approval at the end of last month, they wanted to remove anything that, or any projects that are within the historic overlay districts or historic landmark. They felt that having a public comment period and public notice for those projects was important, and so they wanted to exclude those from the type-one process and keep those at a type-two level, which, which involves public notice. In addition to that, what we have included in the amendments from the beginning and were approved by Planning Commission is excluding anything that would initiate a higher-level review, so conditional uses, any overlay districts. So if it's in a natural resource overlay or geologic hazard overlay and it needs review there, it has to go through a higher-level process. And then any uses where modifications are proposed, modifications to a code, or where non-conforming upgrades are required, because that's, that, that code is not as black and white, and so we, you know, it is discretionary, and so we do have to have a public notice and comment for those. But generally, it would apply citywide with the exception of those historic districts and landmarks.
Great. Good. Thank you.
Anybody else? So I, I have a question, you know, when you bring up the historic district, but we're saying that these things are black or white. Either you can do them or you can't do them. So why force someone into, you know, a longer, more drawn-out process when it really is just a absolute yes or no?
Do you want to answer, or do you want me to?
Sure. So our staff proposal was to apply the same process uniformly throughout the city for that same rationale. The Planning Commission felt it important to retain the public notification process within historic districts. Now, the, I think the important thing to know, too, is if it did need review by Historic Review Board, this process doesn't apply. This only applies to, again, the nondiscretionary criteria, so.
Well, it seems to me that while I absolutely appreciate the work that the Planning Commission does and the hours they put in, and I've said on numerous occasions, you couldn't get me out of the Planning Commission with a shotgun, that maybe in this particular instance, I understand the feeling, but when it is truly a black and white issue, I don't see, and if, you know, something is going to require to go before the Historic Review Board, which is a, you know, a group like the Planning Commission that can turn things down, right?
Certainly.
That, for me, I think these should all be under the same set of rules. And I'm just saying that, and I tossed that out for some discussion.
I mean, I, I hear what you're saying. I would, I guess I would like to know what the Planning Commission's thought was on that, but we have one, I think, one person.
Well, I think I, I think I have an idea, and, you know, it's, it's the overwhelming concern for the historic districts and name codes. But at the same time, if this is an absolute yes or no based on, you know, the clear-cut code, why subject a property owner or somebody to an extra set of stuff that it's still gonna be an absolute concrete yes or no at the end of that?
What's the, what's the timeframe, what's the difference in, in time for both processes? One where public noted, is notified and one where it's not?
About four months to, to over the counter, or two weeks and about $850 to $200. I do have to say that they did specify in the hearing that this process is making things easier, and for those districts, they're just keeping it the same. They're not making it harder.
Yeah, I get that, but for me, four months for something that we already know where this, where our code is gonna be, doesn't make any sense to me.
It could be less than four months, but.
Well, no, I'm, I'm, you know, I really wouldn't care if it was two months. If it's a decision that, you know, the sky is blue or the sky is not blue, that's really what this is about, and it doesn't really matter where the sky is, whether it's over historic district or over a nonhistoric district.
Well, in this case here, it allows notification to the neighbors. Is that correct?
Right.
In a historic area.
But my point is, is that, so the neighbors get notified, the neighbors are unhappy, but the decision's gonna be the same whether they got notified or not. And then there's the extra expense of notification, the time, and the, you know, all the other things. I think if we're gonna change this bit of the code, I think it should just be blanket with the, you know, exceptions of the, the rules that are already in place, which is if it needs to be looked at by Historic Review Board, if it's, if it's outside of the black and white, you know, I don't know. I just think that they should all be the same.
Well, I wonder if we should run that by the Planning Commission to see if.
Well, Planning Commission already made a decision.
Well, I mean, but we're kind of overriding their decision.
That's right.
Which is our responsibility.
Correct. But we better make sure, I want to know what they're.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanna, I just don't know if we're missing something that they had a concern about that we have to hit tonight.
Are we in a hurry to do this?
No.
Then I, I guess my suggestion would be that if we are all in consensus about that, that we kick this back to the Planning Commission, have them, you know, look at that particular piece of this again, and then come back to us with at least a letter stating their intentions, or have someone from the Planning Commission come and tell us what their intentions were.
I would propose, I would propose an alternative. Why don't we adopt this, except for that area? Just hold that piece out until we have that conversation, so the rest of the good citizens in Oregon City aren't penalized any longer for a long process and expensive.
I could agree with that. We have, do we anticipate that we're gonna burn up all of our time on Monday? Or could we take 15 minutes and talk with the Planning Commission about this?
I have a feeling we'll burn up all of our time on Monday.
Let's, Tom wasn't there.
Oh.
Why don't we tag this on to the end of the Plan Commission, the joint meeting on Monday? And if we don't have time, we don't have time. But if we could take 10 or 15 minutes and have this discussion between the City Commission and the Planning Commission, maybe we could iron it out and come to an agreement.
So I guess the specific question I would have for the Planning Commission is, which particular, particular instances do they care the most about this additional level of review for? And what vast majority of simple decisions do they really not care about?
They did, on your screen, the, the fifth bullet there is what they added, and it's involve any proposal in the historic district that involves the activities of 2A through C. And so if we go back to A through C, those are, and actually, staff added building additions to that, so it's replacement of exterior building materials, addition of windows or doors, alteration of roof lines, and then we added actual square footage additions to that, because it just made, made sense to do that. And so the remainder of the types of projects on this list, so D through T, would still be able to go through the type-one process within the historic district, but, you know, a storefront improvement, for example, would not, because it would be in that A through, it would fall under that A through C.
But I, so, hang on, let me do this first. So even, even with that extra level of review, assuming that the project meets the, the letter of the code, even if there was a bunch of people who were vehemently against it for whatever reason, staff would still approve that?
It meets the code.
It does allow, it does allow the, the appeal process. A type-one decision doesn't go to the Land Use Port of Appeals, it goes to the Circuit Court. A type-two decision would, would allow them into the appeals process, which would get the decision of the, of the staff in front of the City Commission. So that's one of the differences.
In front of the City Commission and eventually possibly in front of Luba.
Correct.
Correct.
Which is exactly the reason why I wouldn't support that. We have enough people taking every decision we make to Luba now. Why, why add another section of folks that can do it when it's absolutely black and white in our code already? It doesn't make any sense to me.
And if it's, if it's a building on the registry, it would go to Historic Review Board anyway.
Matter what.
Right.
So maybe there's another angle to go at this, on those four items that they want to have more extensive review. Are there ways to make the code language much more specific so that it could be a black and white decision, so they could fall into this category? For instance, replacement of exterior building materials. Maybe you want to say historically accurate building materials, so then.
That's pretty subjective.
So it already is, because we have a list of prohibited materials, and then we have a list of special materials, so it already is black and white. There was just concern, so there was a long discussion at Planning Commission, and we had a little bit of a split decision, but the concern was just letting people know. It was the notification process, that people may do something different if there is a notification process regardless of the nondiscretionary nature of the criteria.
So there's a meteor gonna hit Oregon City in two hours. We're gonna notify it. What good does it do? I mean, it's just that simple.
Gives them an opportunity to vent, I guess.
Probably not, not, not within two hours, you're not gonna get away.
Depends on how big the meteor is.
I don't know. Where are we at on this?
I'm with you, Dan.
I feel comfortable with it, but I still, I'm just wondering if we're missing something that the Planning Commission brought up that we just didn't have heard, but.
All right. I'm willing to, I would entertain a motion to table this until our next City Commission meeting, to have us, let us have an opportunity to have a short discussion with the Planning Commission next Monday.
Second. All right, well, I'll make the motion. So moved. How's that?
Second.
Discussion? Call roll, please.
One sec. We're still. There is a public hearing.
Oh, that's right. It's a public hearing. So, okay, so at this point, I will open the public hearing. Is there any folks wishing to comment? Seeing none and hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Now we can, and we can do the motion after, oh, because we're.
The motion is already on the table, yeah.
And you have nothing to say at this point, so call roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Grind, grind, thump, thump. Now we are on to, oh, is that right? Yes. Appeal of the, 16-431, Appeal of Public Works Director's Assessment System Development Charges SDCs for a two-story office building at 415 Center Street. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor and City Commissioner. So we have brought this before you before, and we're bringing it back. Actually, you asked us to go back and look at some things and, and bring back a recommendation. We're still recommending the denial, and I'll talk through that a little bit, but just for the listening public, system development charges are assessed on all development and are intended to pay for the cost of constructing or providing capacity for the city's sewer, water, stormwater, drainage, parks, transportation systems sufficient to accommodate new development. This particular site is a vacant site. It's been, it was, it was, had a home on it several years ago, 2002, I believe, is when it burned down, and so it's been vacant ever since. There has been some activity from the property owner over the years, but it's never really gotten any kind of permitting to indicate that it's something other than a vacant lot. So this particular property owner is proposing to build a commercial. So this particular property owner is proposing to build a commercial building consistent with historic requirements of the neighborhood and has asked that he receive the, the reduction of SDCs. So our code can allow for a reduction. If you remember, the City Commission struggled with this issue because before our limitation on prior use was at eighteen months, City Commission agreed that that should be longer and they recommended a ten-year period of time. So this is over ten years, so it doesn't, there's no provision in the current SDC code that allows us to provide a reduction. And I've looked at a variety of other ways. Is there a way to maybe reduce the SDC based on our methodologies, based on the type of use? And, you know, I've checked with, with the building developer to find out, you know, is there, you know, we've got, for instance, a small reduction based, you know, on whether or not it's a single tenant versus multiple tenants. So if it were multiple tenants, there would be a small reduction for transportation SDCs. That's not the case. They're a single tenant and there's really no way to get there. So even looking at means and methods for reducing the SDC, it's just not, it's not in the code. So we'd have to do a code amendment. The other thing, really the, the reason why you asked us to go away and come back and bring this back to you was, my thought was, well, maybe there's some, because the, the developer and his representative were here and were complaining also about some of the developer requirements for public improvements. So we looked at those public improvements and tried to find out if there was something that we could, you know, just not require. And we don't feel we're asking for anything that we wouldn't, again, ask of another developer. So there's certain things that we require with regard to stormwater management, sanitary sewer, some of those facilities are there, but they need, they need more. So the bottom line is, is we are still suggesting a denial. I guess the other little, other little piece I forgot to mention was even, even if we could find a way to reducing, say, there was a paving requirement, we do like to require new, new development in existing areas. If the roadway condition is in poor condition, we ask them to, to mill it off and pave it back. You know, I asked, well, what, what if we got there, would the property owner be willing to accept that as a, as a compromise? And the answer was no. So, you know, really he's looking for the full cost of reduction for what he would get in credit for a, for a, a single family home and we're, you know, we just can't get there.
Thank you, sir. So my, my question is, if this is an appeal of the Public Works Director's Assessment, I'm looking around the room and I don't see the appellant in the room. Is that right? Is there, is there somebody here from?
No, no, they're not here.
Well, that says something to me. Commissioner Smith?
I, I guess I want to thank staff for taking this back, but I don't think the Commission should have asked that. This is, this is something that I felt we shouldn't have, have passed at the time because it does open the door for a lot of other issues. Unfortunately, the majority of the Commission, you know, we were questioning that and asked staff to look at it again. I think we probably should have listened to staff and I, I will make a motion to deny or to deny the appeal of Public Works Director's Assessment of System Development Charges for a two-story building at four fifteen Center Street.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Shaw. Discussion. This is not a public hearing, correct?
Actually, it's listed as a public hearing.
Okay, well, then before we have any more discussion, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers? No in the audience? Then I'll close the public hearing and we will have a discussion. Questions, comments? I guess the only thing I have to say then is that, one, if you're going to appeal something, I think it probably would behoove you to show up at the meeting where it's being discussed. And then on the other thing, in their two-page application, it still says replacement dwelling, which isn't what they're applying for, right?
No, it's a office building and it was a dwelling before, it was a single-family residence before.
Right, so I mean, just on that respect, when they applied, they're asking for an application for something that they're not actually doing, so.
So one, one other little thing, because I've heard, the notice piece, we continued it to this meeting at the, at the first meeting.
They were at.
And I did talk to their architect about the fact that we're bringing this and what our, I told him what I was going to say, so they knew, I'm assuming they decided just not to show.
Okay. Further discussion?
Well, normally if this was just going to be a residence on there, it'd be twenty-five thousand, I think, isn't it? SDC fees are running for a typical house in Oregon City right now, twenty-four, twenty-five thousand.
A little more, I think.
Close enough for government work.
Okay, and this is at fifty-one thousand total, right? So another twenty-five thousand on there and stuff, so, anyway, we're good.
Call roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Motion carries, we move on. So these are a couple, hopefully it should be fairly quick. Sixty is sixteen dash four thirty-nine, Resolution Number sixteen dash one nine, calling a measure election to submit to the electors of the city of Oregon City, the question of authorizing up to sixteen million of general obligation bonds to finance a community safety facility, declaring intent to reimburse expenditures and providing for related matters. Who's got this one?
I do.
Chief Band.
And I'm excited to. Thought about this and put a lot of work into getting here today. We are, I'm recommending that Resolution Number sixteen dash nineteen, what, I'm going to say just a couple of things, kind of to summarize them, I'm not going to go through everything, you know, we've, I think people have a, a good understanding about the fee. There are a couple of things that I, I just want to say, some of which that we talked about last Tuesday, but just kind of for people who might be watching who don't know, but just kind of also to remind you, because there are a couple of things that have kind of changed over the course of this whole conversation, which has been a couple of years now. There were, when we originally did a concept design for this police department, we paid the group McKenzie to, to basically give us an idea of what we would need and what it was going to cost. And there were, a lot of work went into looking at Mount Pleasant and the best way to, to build a, on that site, something that was going to work for the city, for a police station and then down the road. And then a big piece of it was the costing. At the time, they don't say your building's going to cost X, they say it's going to cost, here's kind of the low end and here's kind of the high end. So we based our, kind of our target was around, was eighteen million dollars and that was just below kind of the middle of what that window was. We had a, we're doing some work with John, just looking at SDCs and street improvements and that kind of stuff, hired that same consultant to just do a little more work to make sure our costing was very accurate. One of the things that came back in addition to some changes in SDC and then the, the street improvements was the cost of construction had gone up in a very short period of time. And I don't know what all that means, but I'm guessing it has something to do with supply and demand, but our, our kind of middle was now twenty million dollars overnight. And there is, when you look at how we were going to pay for this police department, from, from the get-go, there were two places where we were going to take money. One, the sale of the building that we have now. Eventually, we will sell that building and it will go back on the tax rolls, it's not on the tax rolls now, and, and we'll, we have always planned on using the proceeds of that building to, to go toward this project. The other was SeaSafe and that is the, the fund that we've had, that we've been collecting on since June, you passed it last in May of fifteen. And we've been collecting on that for not quite six months. And so whatever we eventually ended up with from, from SeaSafe and then the building would go to pay for this project, we did say from the outset that it was likely at some point we would come to see if you wanted to use the money from SeaSafe to go out for a bond, to put that before the voters in the community. We also, so inside that piece of SeaSafe, from the start, what mostly I had said out in the community, hitting every neighborhood, lots of places, was we would collect on the fee for a couple of years, I think we'd figure two and a half years, and then go out for what would be a fifteen-year bond at that point. So fifteen years has been in, in people's mind. The, when we sat down with Bond Counsel and started having the conversations and looking at this new, this twenty million dollars versus this eighteen million dollars, how, how do we still get there wanting to make sure? We, we told everybody we're, we're going to enact this six dollar and fifty cent fee and the fee is not going to go up. That was something we said very clearly. And the other thing was that the, the cost, whatever we did with the bond or, or otherwise, the reason behind the fee was so that we would never raise people's taxes to, to pay for this facility. That was kind of into the whole, you know, why we did a fee instead of going, going at it that way. So when you look at it that way and you think about the fact that that piece on us selling the building, we cannot move into, we can't move out of and sell, there, there, there's some ways we could do it, but the easiest and probably best way to sell that property is after we've moved out of it and occupied the police department. So how do we get the twenty million dollars we need to build? We're not going to increase to six fifty, we're not going to go to people's taxes. So going to the bond people, we said, look, this is, this is what our fee is, if we were to go out for a bond and support, pay debt service on that bond with those fees, how would we do it? And essentially what they said was it would be a twenty-year bond, not a fifteen-year bond. Now that does not mean that it, it is something where we'd have to wait twenty years. We, we have every intention of paying this off early. Whatever we sell that building for will go toward this because that, that piece that we would be borrowing, some of that would be what we're, what we're planning on selling our building for.
Well, and the longer it sits, the more valuable that building gets too.
Correct, correct. So that, those are just kind of some of the pieces that have adjusted and it is just, cost of construction's gone up, that's the only thing that has really changed. And maybe it'll go down and, I, I don't know, but that's kind of where we're at. If you have any questions, essentially, whether twenty million dollars from the project altogether is sixteen million dollars, twenty-year bond, two million dollars-ish that we're planning on getting eventually from our property, and then two million dollars that we're hoping to have, we're kind of projecting we're going to have saved by the time that we would be going to get a bond. With that, I'm recommending that you adopt Resolution Number sixteen dash nineteen and the supporting materials that you have in front of you. If you have any questions for myself or for Wyatt, please let me know.
I move to approve Resolution Number sixteen dash nineteen, calling a measure election to submit to the electors of Oregon City, the question of authorizing up to sixteen million of general obligation funds to finance a community safety facility, declaring intent and reimburse expenditures and providing for related matters.
This is a public hearing and we do have one person.
Let's hear the second and then I'll, I'll do that.
I'll second.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing. Who's the speaker?
William Gifford.
Mr. Gifford, longtime, no C.
Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford. Apologize for the mumble mouth, I'm having some mouth issues right now. As I think you know, that I am totally in support of this measure. As a matter of fact, I happen to be chair of the PAC that is working hard to get this measure passed as soon as we have a measure. I just gave a presentation tonight. We've been going around to neighborhood associations and trying to convince people that this is really the, the most fair and equitable way that we can fund this project. The, I do have a concern. The concern is that I think we need more money. The bond, the way the measure is written is asking for sixteen million and Chief Band has carefully explained the, how the, the difference between that and the projected twenty million dollar bond, the twenty million dollar project will be funded, but I, I contend a couple of things. One is, we don't know for sure what those construction costs are going to be. They could be over twenty million. By the time we get finished, we're pretty sure that the construction costs will continue to go up and I know that some of that has been calculated already. Secondly, is we're not sure what the value of the existing property is now. There are going to be demolition costs added on top of that or taken away from the value of that property because I don't imagine anyone would want to purchase that property with those buildings on it, even if we improve the buildings. So that's going to reduce the, the property value of that and as the mayor has pointed out, the property value will go up, we would expect, over a period of time. There is an option that we could consider selling the property before the police move out and then lease that property back from the property owner. That would give the, the new property owner the, the option of having lower interest rates, of, of us having a guaranteed buyer and, and, you know, if they, if they would lease it back to us for a dollar a year, that's just something that, that ought to be considered. But I just think that sixteen dollars, I don't want to go cheap on this. I mean, our.
Sixteen dollars would be cheap.
Sixteen million. I contend that sixteen million even is, is, is cheap because I'm not convinced that we're going to be able to keep it at twenty million dollars despite all the best efforts of the brilliant minds and certainly brighter than mine coming to finances. I would feel more comfortable with asking for a twenty million dollar bond and I understand that the difficulties with that, but I, but I also realize that the ordinance calls for up to sixteen million. So I would ask, maybe we could make it up to seventeen million because there's just, there's just a lot of unknowns that, that I think, I'm not, I'm not comfortable that sixteen million bond is, sixteen million dollar bond is enough.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, William.
Is there any further public testimony? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. We have a motion on the floor that has been seconded. As, as much as I appreciate and respect Mr. Gifford's counsel, unless staff has some further suggestion, I think, you know, you guys have worked this to death, Mr. Parno, you have anything to say? Okay, so I.
Mayor Holliday and members of the Commission, I certainly don't feel like I'm the, on the end of a shotgun, I feel like compelled though to just touch base. First, I want to thank William for his passionate support for this project and I can't say enough about the citizens and the support for our police department, it's just a little bit overwhelming to me actually, and William's just one of the best right up there. Specifically to the dollar amount, you know, I think Jim's gone through specifically what's going on with the budget. Be aware, I think what William's trying to advise us all of is the fact that there are changes in construction costs that happened. We did commit to the six fifty per month fee and we committed to not, and you're committing to not levy a property tax, even though we're asking for that authority for the lowest interest rate. To be able to ask for additional funds would be difficult and still meet those parameters. You do as a commission and I would also defer to Jim, but you as a commission could probably change the amount if you chose to, to up to eighteen million dollars. And the reason that you could do something like that is because when push comes to shove, probably about a year from now or sixty, six months to twelve months from now, when we're issuing the bonds, there will be an interest rate that's in place and it's kind of like your mortgage on your house. Now, a better example is when you buy a car and the fellow comes out and he says, what can you afford each month? And you're always saying, well, what am I really paying, right? Well, the what can you afford each month is one point one million dollars, or per year it's one point one million dollars, okay? Based on the fee, it's fixed. Now, we're either going to be able to borrow sixteen million dollars at par with that or if interest rates are a lot lower, we're going to get eighteen million. They'd have to be a lot lower. So if that makes any sense, if interest rates are really low, we might have some more borrowing capacity.
Are interest rates already pretty low?
They're pretty low. Remember, we had a one percent cushion that. They're pretty low. Remember, we had a 1% cushion that Carol added in there, and I'm not confident that a year from now, rates are gonna be where they are today, because we're at the lowest they've ever been, if you remember that chart that Carol showed. So, I will offer to the commission that you could certainly adjust the ballot title to be up to $18 million. And I would defer to Jim also, in terms of what that looks like to the voter. You have a better sense of that? We are going to borrow the maximum that we can, without increasing the 6.50 a month fee, and without levying a tax to the taxpayer. And we have, I think, a pretty solid cost estimate as of today.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Questions for the finance director? No? Okay.
Well, I was just thinking.
Cross.
So, $18 million, we're, we are, but using the CSafe and, and the other options that we have, how do we get to the $18 million? I mean, obviously, we have to kinda drop our motion here, because we're asking for something else here, aren't we?
I think what he's essentially saying, Commissioner, is if, in, if, in, in a year, if interest rates have dropped, having our $1.1 million, if interest rates are dropped, we could use that 6.50 and maybe borrow $18 million, and still not have to even think about raising taxes or the fee. On the other side, if they skyrocket, maybe we could only afford, you know, whatever it is, it's more about what we bring in and what that $1.1 million a year can get us in a bond.
We can get hung up on the amount, but really, the, what this commission wants to commit to the voters, and I've heard time and again, and what the chief is advocating for is, "The fee is 6.50 a month, that's what we committed to, it's not gonna change. And we are not gonna levy you an additional property tax." Okay? Still, there's a number of $16 million, and I'll kinda defer back to you, Mayor, in having a good sense of what voters look at and think about. Is there a difference between $16 million and $18 million when you're making a vote like that, or do people think that's a reasonable range? Because those other two variables are not gonna change.
I think, me sitting in my living room, there is a difference between $16 and $18 million. You know, it's easy for us, you know, in the public sector, the public, you know, view out here, you know, because we're talking about numbers like that all the time. But, you know, Joe and Jane Sixpack, you know, they're saying, you know, $2 million, that's a lot more money. And I think the fact that we've been working this for well over two years, talking the same basic numbers, that to change it now is a little disingenuous, and that might hurt more than the extra $2 million would help. And I think if we get to a place that we need another million bucks, we'll find a way to get it.
Yeah, I, you know, the thing that I'm, just to be frank, that I'm most, you know, I don't like having to go for a 20-year, people got 15 in their mind, and I've wanted, you know, this has been very transparent, this is the feedback we've gotten. And I just, to put people a little bit at ease about, about the cost, McKinsey has, they're the ones who came up with these numbers for us. They built Woodburn PD, they built Canby PD, Kaiser PD, they did a station out in Vancouver. So, they know, they kinda know the construction of these, and I think it's pretty comprehensive. We paid them a lot of money, so it better be good. It's not on the bottom end, it's not on the top end, and, you know, I, I am pretty confident, I don't ever wanna be looking back on this in two years, wondering why I'm saying this, but I can promise you, we've done as much on the front end to make sure these numbers are good. We paid them once, and then we went back and had them adjust. And, we're in, I think we're in, I appreciate everything that's being said, but the other thing that I don't like is, I don't want it to be, if I'm Joe Sixpack, and I often am, I think sometimes people think, you know, government spends what it has, you know what I mean? And-
Well, usually more than it has.
Yeah, but, but you know what I'm saying? I mean, if, if, I think we're gonna be fine. I really think we're gonna be fine.
Thank you.
May I just say, then, this, that staff stands by its recommendation for $16 million bonds, 20-year term, and those, that fee will not change.
With a, a 10-year, what's the 10-year thing? 20-year bond with the-
We will do our, we will do our best to achieve that 10-year prepayment call.
So after 10 years, we can pay off the bonds, early, anytime during that second 10 years?
Yeah, and I have to say, you know, continually, this is just, that's why Oregon City just impresses me as the most fiscally responsible city, and you guys are great, is because we keep our word, just like we did with the tax rate, we're not at our maximum rate, just like what Jim's trying to do, is just do the best we can with taxpayer dollars. And that's, so I, I would stick with the recommendation that we have.
So there's a motion and a second on the tables. Any further discussion?
No.
Call roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so this is the, now, this is under general business instead of the other thing, okay. So, 16-424, Resolution Number 16-20, calling for an election to approve the change in status and construction of improvements on a portion of the Wesleyland Park under Section 41 of the Oregon City Charter, and adopting a ballot title. Who's the Community Services Director?
Interim Community Services Director, Denise Conrad.
Go ahead.
Staff is recommending approval of Resolution Number 16-20, and authorizes, that authorizes the city manager to file the ballot title. This is for the November 8th primary election ballot. The city commission is required to hold a public hearing and adopt this resolution to place this item on the ballot. This item is the second time you've seen it. It was on the May 17th election, it failed by six votes. At the work session this month, we were asked to bring it back to you. This is basically to allow the developer, building a small, single-family subdivision, to build a road, full-width road, on park property for access to those properties. And it also provides the construction of an underground stormwater outfall convenience system across the part of the park property.
Okay. So, did I hear you right? You said you're, we're required to have a public hearing on this?
Mayor Holliday, I looked at the staff report, and the staff report does say a public hearing is required. I don't believe when it is, but because we said it, it probably isn't a bad idea to see if there's any public inputs to hold a public-
Well, the problem with that is, is that it needed to be advertised as a public hearing. So if somebody did wanna come and testify at a public hearing, they didn't know that they could do that.
You know, I'm fairly certain-
How, how much of it, sorry about that.
Sure.
How, where are we at in the timeline? Are we too tight to go out another two weeks on this?
We can bring it back at the next meeting, if you want to do that.
Let's, I would prefer to do that. Let's do the research on whether it needs to be a public hearing or not, and, Mr. Parno, do you have something to say?
One night, I'm not sitting at the dais, right? I get to come up and talk to you. I just, I just wanna give Bill one more opportunity to touch base on that, because we had talked about, specifically on the measure, we just talked about whether we were required to have a public hearing, and I thought the firm did some research, and we were not. So if that were the case, it does, it does put a little time crunch on the recorder to, at this point, it would be good to move forward if the commission's comfortable with that. And if, Bill, you need to do some more research, that's fine.
I'm relatively comfortable that it doesn't require a public hearing, but, you know, we've got something in the staff report, so, you know, if we open it up and allow people to talk, you know, I don't, I don't think that's going to cause a problem to have it noticed as not a public hearing.
I would yield to the pleasure of the commission on this.
I just have a question. This is the same exact resolution, we didn't change any wording or anything, right? So we're just anticipating that us commissioners and the public are gonna do a better job educating the voters than-
Other than the dais.
Right, but every, we didn't change any wording to try to make-
We, we did change some wording. I don't have the specifics of what those changes are, but they're relatively minor, given the constraints that we operate on with word count, that, and neutrality, there's a limit to what we can do, but we did make some changes.
Just, just so you know as well, this will, there is a seven-day period that this needs to be posted in the newspaper, and there is a challenge period that someone could challenge the ballot title itself. It allows for a public challenge, and that has to be posted and noticed in the newspaper. So that will happen and occur.
So you're saying-
After, if it's been a-
If we put it off two weeks, you would still have time, but it would be substantially tighter at that point, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Correct, and I think she's also saying that there is a built-in mechanism by which if the public wants to comment on the ballot title, they can, even if it were approved tonight.
Sure.
I feel okay with that.
We go for it.
Okay.
I'm comfortable moving forward.
Okay, so, this is not a public hearing, but I will see if there is anyone who wishes to comment. I don't see anything on the list. Okay, is there a, have we did, we haven't done a motion yet. I'm waiting.
I move to approve Resolution Number 16-20, item Number 16-424, calling for an election to approve the change in status and construction of improvements for a portion of the Wesleyland Park under Section 41 of the Oregon City Charter, and adopting a ballot title.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mengeleberg, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there any discussion? Okay, so I have one thing to say, and that's to the folks at the Oregon City Parks Foundation and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, that this really is good for Wesleyland Park. And it's good for the entire city. I think the mistake we made was thinking, "Well, you know, these things always get approved, so it's no big deal." But when you, you know, when you put park property, you know, people get all excited for all different reasons without really knowing what's going on. So certainly, I would appreciate, and I think the commission would appreciate, your help in getting the message out in this next election cycle. Anything else? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. So, this is a discussion item, 16-429, Appointment and Application Process for City Commission Vacancy. So let me preface this by saying that during the couple of weeks before Commissioner Polly resigned, I was certainly aware that that was probably coming down the pike. And I went back to my old memory of what the charter was back in the day, and I haven't had a chance to go back and research it, but we, we were under the assumption that if we were within 180 days of an election, that we could not appoint. Since then, the city recorder and the city manager have done some further research into the charter, and that is not the case. So, what we are talking about tonight is, are we, should we have an application and a process to appoint? We aren't required to under the charter, but it is certainly within our discretion. So who's, Ms. Briggs, are you doing the staff report?
Yes, I just brought forward a tentative timeline, the application that we've had in the past, and it was really open for discussion if it's up to the commission, if they would like to appoint someone in the interim for this position, or if they wanted to wait and have an election, appoint someone. The term of this would end in December, December 31st, 2016. So the person would be appointed through that until the end of December.
So three months.
Well, three more months.
And let me just remind you that this person also sits on the Urban Renewal Commission. So we are currently down two members of the Urban Renewal Commission. If you do appoint someone, or choose to appoint someone, they would also serve on the Urban Renewal Commission.
Commissioner Smith?
I have, I have mixed feelings about it. I think it's a lot cleaner that the voters decide who they want to fill that seat in November. I think if it was at the six-month mark, or something, you know, by the time we go through this process, we're gonna be what we would appoint, and we would have the new commissioner seated in September for October, November, December, if everything goes perfect. So I'm mixed on that. I guess if we decided to appoint someone, my, my preference would be that that advertisement of open position matched the deadline for filing, and then we draw from the people that have filed for a commission. Because if we, if we have, so, I mean, if we're gonna have this open and accept advertisements for people that are, you know, wanting to fill that position, I would want it to be someone that's filed to run for the elective position, and, and so we don't have multiple pools of people to draw from. I think if, if we keep that open, if we decide to appoint it, that we keep that open until the, what is the deadline for filing for?
The deadline for filing for city commission is the end of August, so I believe it's August 31st. And the one thing I might mention that might be a little bit confusing is, if you do something as what you're suggesting, if someone has filed for position, let's just say-
They would also have to-
Number two, and you appoint them right now to position number three, that could be a little bit confusing to the voters.
Yeah, I agree.
Commissioner Shaw?
Well, the appointment would be September 7th, or 21st, but-
Yes.
Let's say September 7th, that's like three months they would be in office. So I think it's a little, I think it's a little late. I think that, if this was earlier, you know, in the year and stuff, it's probably a good idea, but this seems to be a little, little late to put somebody on board now.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
I don't think it looks right in the eyes of the public to appoint someone to an open position seat when there's an election a month later, two months later. And so, if we decide to forego this appointment process, we would need to commit, as a commission, just be here so that we don't run into quorum issues. That'd be the only concern. The other, the other, you know, potential concern is that if there's, you know, a split vote two to two, then whatever motion it is, doesn't pass. So that's a risk as well.
So, we have, fortunately, because we are so collaborative, we have not had a situation even close to that, you know, as far as splitting a vote or anything like that is concerned. I might offer one potential solution to this that would allow us to have someone on board, because I think there's gonna be specialty or renewal, there's gonna be some critical decisions that are gonna get made in that, you know, 120-day timeline, towards the end of the year, that we take applications for a caretaker seat. So, saying to folks, we'd like, you know, some of these folks that have been leaders in the community a long time, who would commit that they are not going to run for city commission, to come in and sit in that seat to keep it warm for the months until we have, have an election, we've elected somebody, and they can be, take their seat in January.
So we'd be in charge of picking that person?
Yeah, let me make a hypothetical. Our good friend, Mr. Gifford, has never wanted to be, to run for public office. But, no, and I'm just using you as an example, but someone who has been involved for a long time, who, and there, you know, I can think of a half a dozen other people that might be willing to step in and play that role for four months, who we could, we all know and could trust, and, you know, we could get applications, and if they would, if they would commit that they aren't going to run for city commission, that would be a way to, to solve both those things. And I'm just throwing that out there. I, I have no investment in that idea, it just came to me when Commissioner Smith was talking about. I, I agree with Commissioner- I, I agree with Commissioner Mengeleberg, I think we're too close to appoint someone who can run for election. I think that gives somebody a little bit too much of, you know, you got two months there between the time of the appointment, uh, anywhere from six to eight weeks until the election, and I think if we were to appoint somebody who is running, that gives them at least some sort of an advantage over someone, um, who isn't sitting up here at the time.
I agree.
I think it-
Oh, go ahead.
I think it affects those of you that are running for reelection or staying on the commission past the, the, um, the election date, because, um, you know, the public's going to make their judgments based on what the commissioner, who the commissioners appoint and who that person is, and that could, you know, I, I just, I think there's a lot of political, um, ripples from that, and it's so much cleaner that the people wanting to run for commission apply and by that filing deadline and get voted in as the public wants, and there's no question about motives or why someone appointed someone at the last minute or any of that stuff. I won't be on the commission, so I won't have to deal with that as much, but I think it's just cleaner.
So what are you, are you saying we shouldn't, uh, we shouldn't-
I lean, I, I'm, I definitely lean towards that.
Okay.
Well, I like the idea of what you're talking about, Mayor Holliday, about just having a placekeeper.
Right.
Placeholder that will not run, you know, somebody that, but can that person, that person is appointed and can make all the decisions and everything?
Have the full authority of-
Full authority.
Right.
I think by saying it that way, you're, you're, you're lowering that position by saying this is just a filler, and we have no way of knowing whether or not they're gonna file or not, especially if the deadline for appointing someone is before the filing deadline for running for a commission. I, I think that's, we have no way of forcing a, a citizen to not run if they've been appointed or more run, so making a judgment on who we appoint, I think is a-
One thing you might consider is that you'll likely know who has won this, uh, seat by the first meeting in November, and certainly, you know, most likely by the second. Nothing would prevent you from appointing that person who would take office in January in November, so that you would cut, you know, November, December, you would have somebody on board.
And get them in earlier.
Yeah, I'd like to have a tad bit more research on that before, you know. Yeah, that's, just seems, I mean, the charter says we elect in November, thirty days to certify the ballots, and then they're take office in January.
Right.
I don't see how-
And you wouldn't be appointing them to the term early, you'd be pointing them to the end of Carol's-
No, I, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, that's tough.
Yeah, just an idea.
You know, given Commissioner Smith's arguments, um, and the fact that we do have a pretty good sense of where each other are, unless-
Really?
Well, I think generally speaking, we do.
Generally.
Um, that I, I'm not, I'm not, certainly not terribly concerned about a tie vote. And I think probably it is just cleaner just to say, let's just let the election run its course and, uh, we get our fifth person in January. I mean, I think that's the least politically questionable, uh, you know, I'm, 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 I have no problem taking a political risk now and then, I just don't know, I just don't- I just don't know that this is particularly how I'm willing to die on. So, uh, what's, I don't know, where, where are we, yeah, no, but I, are we at a consensus here? Okay, so we're not going to, we'll just ditch this and wait for the election to play.
Understood.
Okay. And that's it for the regular stuff. Anybody wanna pull anything off the consent agenda?
I, I had one question on, um, resolution sixteen, the supplemental budget for the twenty fifteen seventeen biennium.
Well, then we're gonna have to pull that, and I'll take a motion for the rest of the consent agenda.
Good.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Uh, call roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. So now we're back to sixteen, three ninety-seven, resolution sixteen dash seventeen, supplemental budget for the twenty fifteen, twenty seventeen biennium. Mr. Parnell?
Thank you, Mayor Holliday, and Commissioner Shaw, you had a question regarding that?
Yeah, I was just curious, has recognized the grant funds received from Oregon State Marine Board to conduct a hydrology study at Clackamette Park Boat Ramp? I already did, didn't we do a hydrology study for that boat ramp already, or what is this?
I appreciate your question, and I'm happy that Denise Conrad is here to probably answer that more effectively than I could.
Yes, we did do the hydrology study, the grants were granted, but it's a reimbursement of those funds, so we fronted the funds to do the hydrology study, we submitted our reimbursement to Oregon State Marine Board, as well as ODFNW, it's a two-part grant, and so we've submitted those funds, those funds have come into the city.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I would, uh, have a motion for this particular item.
Move to approve, um, resolution number sixteen dash seventeen, a supplemental, um, budget for the twenty fifteen seventeen biennium.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mengeleberg, seconded by Commissioner Shaw, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Okay. So it's ten minutes to nine. Mr. Manager?
What is that?
Just a, just a reminder to everybody what time it is.
Feels like a shotgun.
We got a list of stuff to talk about.
Yeah? So I'd like to start off, um, we, uh, we lost a, a long-term employee from our Parks Department, Steve Little passed away. He'd been a Parks Maintenance Worker for eighteen years with the city, um, had many friends, relationships, um, so I just wanted to pass along that he is, we're having a celebration of life service, um, for Steve on July thirtieth at eleven AM at the Willamette Christian Church, uh, thirty-one fifty-three Brandywine Drive in West Lynn, so just wanted to pass that along. National Night Out, you're all aware, just so those in the public are aware as well, August second from five-thirty to eight-thirty at the Mount Pleasant School up on Lynn Avenue. Invite, um, all the public and, uh, to come visit the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, uh, their staff, our staff and designers will be available at the First City Celebration this Saturday, it'll be open from, we'll be there from eleven to six. The festival will be going on longer than that, but hopefully folks will be able to come down, we'll be right down there on Main Street with, uh, several booths, um, so come give your input, so we can continue to move forward on the Riverwalk design as, uh, we continue to make progress on that. Uh, we did provide an update for the Urban Renewal Agency, uh, this, earlier this evening, but I'll repeat it again, that we have a groundbreaking event for the Grand Cove Project on July twenty-seventh from ten to, ten AM to eleven AM on Main Street behind the Oregon City Shopping Center, across from Clackamette Cove. We had sent around the League of Oregon Cities' requests, input from all of the cities as to the top legislative priorities. Staff had identified, and there's, what floor, there's twenty-some on here, and they asked for four. Staff had identified, uh, restore recreational immunity, uh, mental health investment, rights of way, and transportation and funding and policy package, um, is kind of the four on this list that seemed to be the highest priority that the League of Oregon Cities should be focusing on. Uh, there was consensus amongst all of, everyone who submitted on the transportation, funding, and policy package. There was, uh, almost all consensus on rights of way, as well as, uh, mental health investments and restore recreational immunity. Some that were identified that weren't in the top were needed housing assistance, uh, marijuana, and funding water system resilience. So we kinda, it seemed like we had consensus on the floor that were consistent with staff, but I'd be happy to have that discussion if the commissioners have a different direction.
Okay, okay.
That's good.
You okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll be, we'll be submitting that. And then Barclay Hills Park, a new, new playground will open, um, we already heard tonight when we had the prac presentations, hopefully folks can come out and visit us on Thursdays for concerts in the park at the end of the Oregon Trail, it'll be Rattle Revolutions, eighties tribute band. Um, and then, um, Ms. Conrad, if you wouldn't mind providing an update on the ramp and all the good going on in Clackamette Park?
So we did initiate the mobilization for the Clackamette Boat Ramp Repair Project, and so they are down there, they're gonna start their work, um, fairly quickly. That project will be completed by the end of the in-water work period, which is August thirty-first, and that would mean that our boat ramp would be open in September. Per your request to bring that, um, item of the boat ramp back to the commission for another work session, we discussed it with Oregon State Marine Board, and they would like to, um, provide an opportunity for an open house for stakeholders, as well as the commission, to have a discussion about location, um, the funding permitting impacts, the parking restrooms, the grant implications, and be able to provide that to all the stakeholders, um, because it does have a bigger voice than, um, just the one ramp, so being it's a regional facility. So they'd like to open that up, um, and they wanted to approach you to see if that is amenable, and then come back to a work session after that open house. And we're looking at probably September, which would be good timing as the ramp would be open.
Yeah, we'll like it.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, and sorry, one other thing, Barclay Hills Playground is open. The, uh, basketball court is closed, 'cause that is the next item that we will be resurfacing, but the playground is now open.
Is there parking up there, Denise? I drove by today, that's a great-looking park.
There's actually good street, but it's, that, that street is substantially wider than most typical streets, so there's, there's good street parking bo, on both sides of the street there. We had our, the Barclay Hills Neighborhood Association picnic last year, and there was plenty of places to park on both sides of the street, still allow access.
That is correct.
When is the event, well, is there a kit, an event to celebrate that? Do we know when that's at?
Uh, we haven't scheduled an event to celebrate that, because we have some site furnishing, some other things that we wanna do. I know that the Barclay Hills Neighborhood Association would like to do some sort of ribbon cutting at their picnic, their association picnic.
Yes, which is, I don't know.
August sixth.
August sixth, okay, well, then you know more than I do.
That's a great, uh, surface on here.
Katie, could you send out a, be the invitation for that and for the, um, celebrational life service to the commission?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, anything else?
Library update. Yeah, we're gonna see some pictures.
What are you gonna do in two months?
We'll still get updates every month, I know.
Yeah, because I know you would miss me, so.
Oh, look, here's a scratch on the wall.
Here's- Oh, yeah, plenty, plenty. So, um, so we've been busily moving-
Fix it with that brushy thing?
Yeah, that brushy thing.
Brushy thing.
Yeah.
That's stupid.
Oh, there's one. So, good evening, commission. The library has met its goal of moving out of the Carnegie by the date that we targeted so that the contractors could move in and get started. They indeed are started, and we have been busily transitioning into the new addition since then, and it is a lot of work. It's going well, oops, wait, back up. This is what the renovation is looking like. So this is the destruction of the ramp, this will turn into an up ramp, and then stairs only will be for the, that entrance will turn into a staff-only entrance. All the ugly lights are out of the Carnegie. I think it looks better already. Wow. That's the basement, is, they took out the ceiling, the carpeting, it's very dank, and it, it's gonna look so much better once it gets redone. And then you just had to see some of the back ugly areas, as they rip out mechanical stuff, it's just bad. It's so awesome to think about this place getting renovated and spruced up, it's gonna look way better. And the roof is getting a facelift, so roofing materials have arrived. And the next really fun thing that happened is installation of the art sculpture that happened over the weekend, John Rogers and I were there Friday night, um, all day Saturday and Sunday, and so he got it installed in record time, because nobody was floating around underfoot, it was great.
Oh, wow.
It is, uh, I don't have a good picture of the centerpiece, so the center part is three commas together, and this piece is called camaraderie. It goes really, really well with the vinyl application that's on the, he, he named it, not me. The vinyl application on the-
Probably would've been the same either way.
Yeah. And, um, every, it just looks great, it fits the space really, really well, the color is amazing, whatever angle you're at, it looks different. It's made of dichroic glass, which means it has more than one color in it, and it, it's just wonderful, so I hope you like it as much as I do, we're really pleased with it so far.
Dichromic?
Dichroic.
Oh, okay.
Dichroic, yeah.
I have one question.
Yeah.
So he's on a scissor lift.
Yeah.
When we get done, are we still gonna, are, are we still gonna be able to get something in there to like clean this thing and, you know, change light bulbs and things like that?
A scissor lift will still be able to go in and out very, very easily.
All right.
Yeah, it, it works really, really well, and we will require that. So this is the inside of the, the lobby, and the light fixture on the left was really dirty and scuzzy, and they cleaned it up and put it back on there, and it looks so nice, it looks really, really good. And then you can't really see, but on the right, there's a little bit of green, and that's reflection of the, um, sculpture. So that is at different times of the day, it's all over the place. New shelving and children's-
Wow.
-being created. It's one of our fun little tables, you guys will love this, this is made by a company that used to make skateboard ramps, they use like, um, kind of the same material as milk bottles, and this stuff is gonna be sturdy, the, this, we've got bigger sized stuff of this too, and it's gonna be my favorite furniture, I can tell. Computer tables for kids, um, stacks upstairs, already have books in them, so we, that, that got done and staff filled the, well, they didn't fill it, you can see there's lots of empty space, which is what we planned, so that we can fill it with more materials, but we have loaded the adult material upstairs. This is the teen area with shelving in it, it looks amazing, they're gonna love it. And I think that's it for tonight, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on that.
Picture of your office.
Very cool.
Where's your office?
My office is down the road from that, yeah, it's great.
Down the road?
Yeah, um-
She's offsite.
Yeah, offsite, yeah, down the hall from that. It's just gonna be fabulous, it's a beautiful, beautiful building, we just love it dearly already, and we just cannot wait to reopen and show it off to the public. So the soft opening will be, um, Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, and the grand opening, which will include everything, the Carnegie renovation, will be October fifteenth, Saturday, October fifteenth.
Okay.
Yes.
The stairs in the front that we awarded grant, that, those will be done too, that all will be done?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Manager, anything else?
That concludes, uh, my updates for tonight, I did receive a, a note from behind the glass there that they need to break to flip the DVD at nine, ten.
Oh, no.
Okay, well, let's, uh, let's get done, then. So Commissioner Mengeleberg, you got anything? Commissioner Shaw?
Just went marijuana open house, uh, the concerts in the parks are going on, and that's it, yep.
Went to, uh, friends of our Matinger House meeting, and they're working on, as I said before, a proposal to bring to the city, hopefully by the end of the summer. They also met with, uh, Tim Hole at, um, at Coin Toss Brewing to talk about some future, partnerships and, and, um, fundraising opportunities for the house in the future, hopefully. Went to the Willamette Falls work session for the, uh, Whitewater Park, um, discussion, went to the VFW Hall for the- Went to the VFW Hall for the barbecue-
Completely missed that.
-for the Police Department, which was incredible. And I just want to say for today, Chief Band is a miracle worker because my dad came to a city commission meeting, which is unbelievable. There was a reason, Sean Davis, who was promoted this evening, is darn near a brother. His wife has been a sister to me my whole, pretty much my whole life. I grew up with them both. And Officer Edlund's worked with him at the high school when he worked there. So I was really excited about those two tonight and the new addition with Nick tonight. Also the ability to move forward on the resolution that we did tonight for the Police Department, which when I was elected, never saw that coming. My mission was to get 40 police officers hired in this town and to get the Police Department back on track, never thinking that we would also start talking about a building. And that's in motion and I'm so excited about it. Sorry, I took up more. You've got five minutes.
So it was interesting to find out that there is somebody that you're not related to in Oregon City.
Yeah, sorry.
So I had a few things. Obviously, we've heard about the wastewater meeting and so I was there and did that thing. Thursday, Friday, I think was probably the most exciting thing is to finally bring folks together and start talking about next steps for Rossman, too. And so I had some meetings with folks moving forward on that. Went to the Legacy Project Partners Meeting. Basically, we put off the decision on the Whitewater Park for two weeks until Metro and Clackamas County had an opportunity to have work sessions and make consensus decisions at those boards. I would, we're supposed to meet back again. Do we have a date for the partners meeting?
Yes, we do.
Next month?
It's in, it's in mid-August.
Yeah, so we will, we will then get together the partners and make a decision on the Whitewater Park at that point in time?
August 15th.
Okay. And then I guess that's about it. I did have the opportunity to spend a couple of days, Sunday, Monday, and part of Tuesday in Spokane, Washington for private business. Had an opportunity to meet with Mayor Condon while we were up there. I want to say there, it seems like every street downtown is under construction. It's not quite the case, but almost. And talking to folks, you know, there's some people like we had that, you know, were kind of grumbling about their business and blah, blah. And I said, listen, here's the deal. I said, we had those same people talking about downtown and about how we were going to screw them up forever. And several of those folks have now come back to me and said, hey, I was wrong, we shouldn't have been complaining, this is the best thing that could have ever happened downtown. So I told those folks that same thing. You know, downtown Spokane is about, only about 40 years younger than, or older than us. So there are a lot of buildings, and I sent out some Facebook stuff, but they have the old steam plant that has these beautiful two huge 140-foot smoke stacks all done out of brick. And they have converted that into a mixed-use and retail space. And they have the gondolas that go, you know, across the, it seems like there are 17 rivers there in downtown. I'm not exactly sure how that works, but a lot of that different kind of stuff. And so it was, you know, it's kind of exciting to be able to go somewhere and see the possibilities that will happen here as we move forward on Legacy Project. I just want to finish by again saying that I know that Oregon City is not Baton Rouge and it's not Dallas and that we do support our police officers. And, you know, if you feel like you're one of those folks that wants to say something bad about our police officers, please just keep it to yourself.